Good evening. It is Monday, May 9th. This is town meeting. This is the meeting prior to town meeting and, oh, where's my boulder pin? Did I give it? No, it's okay. It's okay. Does anybody have any additions to the agenda? The only thing I wanted to be able to do is to the Duxbury Dispatch.
Hi. Are you looking for me? Nobody showed up? Really? What time was that supposed to happen?
Okay.
Okay. I think... Okay. Well, I'm now in meeting here at the school, so if he shows up, you must want to post it to across the street. Yeah. It's 7:25.
Do you have a good mom's day with your wife?
I understand. We're gonna have to do it.
With all my mothers and my daughters and everybody else, my nieces and everybody. And one of my nieces is in Africa right now. She's in West Africa with my nephew. They're over there.
That's why I'm calling the chief.
It's good to travel.
Just post on the blog.
Be there in spirit. Did everybody come to your house?
No, we went over to Malina's house. She has a much larger adult. Big yard.
Excuse me, Assessor Emilius.
Yeah. Holly's sick, so she didn't show up. John hasn't shown up yet.
But you can convene at...
Well, I told her to move the meeting, post-meeting there to across here.
Here, yep.
To the all-purpose room at 7:25.
Perfect. Right. That should be pretty quick. So, as I was saying, I wanted to give a brief update on Duxbury and another update on the Montpont at Parkton. Okay. So, first on the agenda is we need to sign the fireworks contract. I thought we did that.
No, we had postponed that because there was a concern about the cleanup after the event.
Oh, absolutely.
And we now have an email from the company saying that they will do so.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, so we'll need a motion to...
So moved.
Who signs it? All of us?
Who's gonna sign? It's only one house.
So we'd be authorized.
So we'd authorize the chairman to say...
We'll have the chair. Ms. Roy to sign in lieu of the board?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So this is for $5,000. So I wonder how many minutes this gives us.
That's just a down payment.
Well, I think, yeah, with the whole, well, there's the 5,000, though, they have to put a down payment, I believe, of half of that. The 5,000 is the minimum, and I think they're hoping that they'll be able to fundraise. I don't know, for instance, the results of the golf tournament today.
Today. I know. I wish they would do. It's so hard for me to do it because it's the day of town meeting every year. I would love to play in it, but usually we're doing so many last-minute things. It looked like, I saw some pictures on Facebook, so it looked like people were having fun.
Did you get all three?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Awesome.
All right. Awesome. Okay. Charlie, do you have anything?
Let me just, I'm gonna... This is the background information that's going to be presented to the voters on the various contracts. These chiefs were, the only one that we're passing over is dispatch. I got a confirmation from the dispatch president to say that, in fact, setting aside any other issues which we're dealing with, they had, still had not come to an agreement on it, on what we were hoping were everything, and so we're just passing over it. We'll bring it back to the town at some point when we've got an agreed series of amendments, and we'll have a future town meeting probably late this summer or later this fall. We'll handle it then.
Do you have another date for negotiation?
Not yet.
Yeah. Thank you. So all of these will be back to the room for handouts for residents of the city.
You have that.
The details of the contract.
Depending on the board's needs, I'm happy to speak to any of the provisions, whatever the board wants. I'm happy to handle on that.
Any questions for Charlie? Everybody?
I should warn, I guess the only thing I should warn the board, that the fire department one is a very large number. It's $56,000. We'll need to raise an appropriate town meeting. Now, it's offset by about $7,200 that we won't spend in the expense budget, which will bring it down to just below 50, but it's a very large number. But it's, you know, Sandy went over the figures, and we had, obviously, had a serious problem in the difference of wages between our town and comparable towns. And this makes up for some of it, doesn't make up for all of it, but it's an attempt, and we'll, you know, present it that way at town meeting. We'll see what the voters want.
Obviously, it's a significant amount, and I do have notes to explain where our rationing was in order to come to that agreement. And that, you know, it is a fair contract, considering what the comparables are in other towns, so...
Is this all for pickup? That's all for pickup. Okay.
Anything else, Charlie?
Not at this point.
Okay. So why don't I just give a, let me just, Brockton's super senti. So I got an email from, I believe it was Senator Brady's assistant, who's been trying on our behalf to arrange a meeting with the Brockton mayor. And he has agreed to meet with us on Friday at 9:30. Charlie and I are gonna go. Paul Collis, Tom Coulter, Betty, his assistant Betty will be there. And I think, I'm assuming that Senator Brady will be there, just to sort of talk to him about some of the issues and follow up on some of the letters that we have sent. And so this is our opportunity to talk to the mayor, which is what we've been waiting for, for a very, very, very long time. So hopefully, we'll make some progress with him. I did hear that the casino is...
It's dead in the water.
Well, yeah.
Well, the state committee voted it down because it was too close to Tonkin and too close to Foxborough.
Well, and also, I think that they felt that they did a bad, poor job citing it, and that it was basically a casual casino in the sense of more than I would have plain ridge.
Yes.
Even though it wasn't going to be slots only, that it wasn't going to be a destination casino.
Right.
And they were looking for proposals along those lines.
Right. So I think maybe in lieu of that, he's willing to sit down with us because they may not require as much water, maybe? I don't know. I don't know why he's finally agreed. We're just grateful that he has, and we're hopeful that we can make some progress with him. Because it is getting a little frustrating, to say the least. So that's going on with Brockton.
Water over the dam.
As you're aware, we've talked about this before, but we have a meeting with State 911 on Thursday. Charlie and I and the chiefs and Matt Tucker, the dispatch manager, are gonna meet with Duxbury and the representatives from the State 911. They're gonna talk to us about what kind of funding we would receive in order to go to Duxbury. And I bring it up because I know we've been talking about it. I know that we may get some questions on it tonight. I did write up a brief explanation saying that, you know, we are in the early stage of looking into this, that, you know, we had been approached by Duxbury some months ago. It's taken some time to get this meeting with Duxbury. And certainly, the money is a huge aspect of, you know, whether or not we're gonna pursue it, but also the service that we would be receiving. And, you know, without question, I think Chief Roderick would agree with me that we feel confident that the quality of the dispatching that we would receive at Duxbury is excellent. And we have no concerns that we would not have an excellent service through them. You know, there are some challenges for making the station dark, but essentially, it's dark now. We don't always have a police officer in the station. That, you know, we do have a dispatcher. However, if somebody ran in on an emergency, that dispatcher could not leave dispatching to assist the person in need. They cannot let anybody in. They cannot go out in the hallway for safety reasons, so those people would still need to wait for the police officer. So there's a lot of technical things that I've talked to you about that are available. And again, we all have to have a comfort in that. And so, right now, we're all sort of gathering the nuts and all the information that we need to present to you. And we can have a real discussion once we know everything. And so, our goal on Friday is, I mean, on Thursday, is not only to find out from State 911 what our funding could be, but it's also have a frank discussion with Duxbury about how the contract needs to be worded. I had expressed to Chief Nor that the agreement that they signed with Plinton would not be adequate for our community, and that I would like to see the pricing of this particular service to be tied to, like, a price per call, with different formulas in there to protect us from prices going up. So, for instance, if the state is subsidizing us a certain amount, if that amount goes up, then that gets calculated in whatever the assessment amount is. And rightfully, if that amount goes down, Duxbury shouldn't have to make up for that. And that we recognize that there may be a capital component in there, although we do know that the state typically will cover those things. So just different things in there that we protect ourselves and that we're going at this in a proactive way and not the state coming saying, "You're gonna regionalize and you don't have a choice," and that's why it's important for us to sort of pursue it at this time. Do you have any questions about the meeting?
Oh, you can answer me.
No, no, no. But do you have any questions, or is there anything particular that you want to make sure that we cover when we go on Thursday?
I think the biggest question in mind is gonna be with the police officers themselves and with what people will do. How will we accommodate individuals coming to their act of dark or when they're after hours? What would that process is gonna be? I'm pretty sure that's gonna be one of the questions they're gonna ask, is, well, what are you planning on doing to, you know, fill in the void?
So you can probably stop me, and then I'll prob, but in the very beginning, like, we don't have sort of a, well, we need to be, we don't have a safe area for somebody to run into anyway. We have the lobby. Again, we don't have a dispatcher that can go out there to assist that person. We would call the officer and have them come. The way that the state works is that they could actually help us with building those kinds of things. And Chief, I don't know if you want to go over the cameras that can happen and how...
Again, just a little background, because this is such a huge issue, and we're all kind of feeling our way through it. I've been under the assumption for a while now that this move is gonna be inevitable, whether it's two months or two years. I think it's gonna happen to someplace, and what we're trying to do now is get ahead of the curve a little bit and try to figure out those questions. I've got a lot of them done already, because we've been, I've been working hard on this for a while. There's technology out there that will kind of fill in the gaps, like we said. There's some technology out there that may even make it better than what we have now. I don't like the term of the station going dark.
Yeah.
I, it may be appropriate, it may not, but it just has bad connotations to it. And what my goal is, what I'm trying to do is make this transition as seamless as I can for both my patrol staff and sergeants that have to work in the building and interact with these people. And obviously, the people coming in that look for the police station as kind of a safe haven, as a very well-known entity, and the citizens of the town. So that's my goal right now, is to try to make that transition as easy as possible and build it out so that it works for everybody. It's gonna be a lot of work. It's gonna be a big change. But I think if we take it one step at a time and explain what we're doing and why we're doing it, and our thought process behind it, at least mine, it'll make a little bit of sense to everybody. So that's what we're working on now. And hopefully, by the time we decide that this is good, bad, or indifferent, and we make whatever change we need to make, we'll be ready for it, so.
So we haven't, we haven't set, just for our own edification, we haven't set on a particular date, month, or time that we may change or anything else, because we still have to work on those discrepancies that we need to get fixed.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing, like you sort of said, is the contract. I'm gonna let people that are better at that than I work those issues out, and that obviously needs to be done. We need to get all that squared away. I'm concentrating on the technical side and what's gonna happen at the building and how we're gonna work through that, so. Now, there's no date. There's no deadline yet.
Yeah.
There may be...
I'm just asking, of course, since I know they're gonna come.
Unfortunately, a lot of these things are out of our control. I mean, there's a lot of things that are going on behind our, not behind our scenes, but in other areas, you know, with 911, with other regional dispatch centers. There's a lot of things that are happening that just, we have no control over, and we're gonna have to respond to, so. And that's, again, we're trying to get ahead of the curve a little bit and make it seamless as we can.
The question was asked of Duxbury. How's, you know, there is no timeline on when we do it, but what's as soon as that they could do it if we needed it, for whatever reason. And they talked about perhaps an October date deadline. So it's not gonna happen until all of us, if ever ha, if it ever...
Well, we still have some negotiating to do.
We have negotiating to do. We're not convinced, yeah, and we're not convinced that it's the right thing for us right now. But if it is, and if it's something that we decide to do the earliest, would be October. But, and then I forgot to mention, and the chiefs will be at this meeting, but on Wednesday, the two chiefs and Matt, I'm gonna be probably part of it, because I do know a lot of IMC as well, just interested about the different components, or meaning to go over the actual infrastructure and all those sorts of technical things. Servers and all that kind of stuff.
We're gonna try and gather all the IT people involved, all the vendors that we work with for our current system, and get everybody in a room and find out just what it's gonna take.
How this can work.
And how we're gonna make it work if we have to, so. Again, we're just trying to get ahead of the curve and get things lined up.
So hopefully, in a couple of weeks, we'll have, we'll give you an update of, you know, where we are there. But things have been sort of at a standstill, you know. You know, as you know, we got the letter from Chief Nor. We had to sign the agreement just to get the State 911 to, we didn't sign an agreement. We had to stay, sign it, and then, you know, to let them know that we are interested without any commitment. And then it took weeks to get that appointment, so nothing's really been done until now, so. One other thing, which is totally off topic, does it make sense to go to the finance committee at this point and just talk a little bit about the contracts? Because I know they were just finalized in the last few days to get a consensus from them.
My intent is to go over there when we're done here.
So why don't we move to, we're not adjourning our meeting.
You can, well, I don't know if you, you might want to move...
Yeah, we'll continue it.
Well, you may want, I don't believe there's a, I don't know if there's a camera over there.
Okay.
You may want to bring, see if they're interested, because this is also, I think, a little bit bigger room.
Okay.
I can ask and see if they would want to come over. We have pretty much concluded negotiations on four of the five contracts. We're gonna pass over dispatchers. We haven't reached agreement there. There are a couple of small issues to do with the highway department, but basically, we've got an agreement. It's crossing a couple of Ts there. We should be able to approve an amount at town meeting. But we're also done with sergeants. We're done with patrol officers. That was simple. That was a 2% across the board, because it's a wage re-opener only a year for them. Done with firefighters, and done with, as I mentioned, done with highway. So we have motions ready to go. We've done, I have background for the contracts that were ready to address at town meeting. I realize, and it's not my preference, that if all this gets done a few days before town meeting, I would rather have been able to sit down with you and give you the exact numbers a few weeks before. But that's not what happened. We ended up with coming to agreements on, well, patrol hours was weeks ago, but the other three were just this past week, even to the point of Friday. We got it, yes, from our unions on Friday.
We didn't know until Friday.
So I apologize for the last-minute information, but I tried to give you as much information as I could during April and early May as to where we stood on the contract negotiations. So at least you had a vague idea of how things were going.
So I don't know if you want me to give you a background of what we were thinking when it comes to the fire contract. As you see, it's a, it's a, it's a large amount, but when we had done our research, we had, on just the towns that we compare ourselves, not the towns like that Pembroke and Kingston, all the towns that take our people, we were just comparing ourselves to like towns that are on our list, like population, budget, capital income. And we found that we were substantially lower than even our like towns. In this case of Step 1, we were 20% lower than regular towns. So there's no question of why we have a hard time finding seasoned police firefighters to come to Halifax, because we are not paying close to the wage that we should. So a lot of this contract, and you can look at all the warding and stuff, but a lot of this is to, we didn't get to where we needed to be, but we, you know, as we did the last time when we looked at the stipends, we got a little closer. We, with the uniform allowance, we went to $1,000 at some point. We're gonna put that into the wage, and then you'll see the reduction this year. The chief will not spend $7,200. That's in his expense account, so that offsets the contract. So...
So what's happening with the clothing allowance is it's gonna be rolled into the basic pay rate. This is mostly to do with a couple of things. We're trying to avoid IRS prosecution, in that they've come down much harder on cities and towns about making, whether the uniform allowances are exempt from taxes or not. This way, by just incorporating it into the wage rate, we just bypass that question. They have taxes taken out of the full amount, of course. Now that'll be rolled in. On the other hand, it gets put into the base pay, into the overtime. So there are advantages for both sides. That's been our aim for the contracts this year, where we've had uniform allowances. So there does, there will be an offset. As much as we're asking for $56,000 through the article, in the end, we'll, at the same time, not at this town meeting, but at the end of the fiscal year, still have $7,200 left over in the uniform allowance section of the fire department's expense budget.
And the chief knows not to spend that money. So it'll become free cash at the end of the year. Again, we, we looked at the stipends. As Gordon, you know from being a fire study, we weren't close, so we just got, tried to get a little closer. Again, the goal is to not only maintain staff, but to attract staff as well. And so, you know, it did come to the end. We didn't know until Friday that this contract had been approved. They were really sort of holding out on the concept of wage openers, which we really tried to hold on to, and we have. And that's important for us. As you know, we don't want to agree to certain, the next year, when we don't know what's gonna happen. So that was a big concession on their part. Their attorneys were saying, "Do not sign a contract that has a wage opener," and they agreed to do that. And so that was, we're not gonna go to arbitration, but we will if this isn't approved. Obviously, we're gonna have to go.
Well, no. What will happen is if town meeting says no, the next step is for us to go back to the table with them, and we'll have to redo it. It may end up that if we, at that point, can't agree, the challenge will be that, though, that town meeting has already said no once to this level. An arbitrator could say, "So what? I don't care. I'm gonna award an amount equal or greater." But it's, so we'll have to go back to town meeting, and I think any arbitrator would look at what town meeting had already done and say, "Well, that's the ceiling. If I try to award something higher than that, there's, it's not happening."
And again, I can't emphasize enough the importance of having that mixture of seasoned with, you know, new folks, in the sense of, when you're in a house battling a fire, and we do have them, we definitely have fires, you want somebody who's seasoned. You don't want for their safety for them to be in with just all newbies that haven't really done this before, or a complex medical. You want to have somebody who's seasoned, has seen things before, and not just the fresh kid that just graduated from paramedic school. There's positives to having somebody who's new, because they're motivated and they're more likely to come back for calls and all those things. But it's important for our, for the quality of service that we offer in this particular area, just as we sort of played for you, for, you know, we came to on the patrolman's last year, it's, it costs us money every time we lose a firefighter in the sense of training and that experience. So I really, I want you to know that we really did the best that we could, and we were so mindful about the money, really. I mean, this was not an easy thing to come to. So, and we feel that we have the backup and the, you know, the averages to back it up, as we said. We did our research.
So overall, what's the...
Is there a percentage?
A percentage overall. I know it's kind of staggered.
No, because that's the whole point, is it's staggered overall. If you wanted to look at a raw number, you can look at the size of the wage line right now, and we're asking for approximately 9% more than what's in the wage line now without the contract. That doesn't mean any one particular individual will get a 9% increase. There may be, maybe higher in some respects, lower in others. So for instance, someone at Step 1 is getting a 7% increase, just wages only, not even talking about rolling in the uniform allowance. Also, the stipend for paramedics is going up $1,000 per person, so that if you're at the low end of the stipends, which is about $3,000 for the paramedic stipend, you're getting a significant increase. You're getting a third increase. If you're at the high end, which is $6,000, you're only getting a sixth increase. So it will vary. I mean, the 9%, you can look at, and it's a real number, but for the individual firefighters, it's gonna be different amounts.
So Step 1 is basically 7, Step 2 is basically 7. But again, we were 20% off. So we're not where we, the average of our towns are, but we're, we recognize this, you know, our affordability at this time and what...
We also know we're not gonna be able to do anything with the health insurance ever.
Right.
Even the towns we're doing the comparables with, most of them are 50/50, and we're never gonna play in that game. We just can't afford to. And so the only place we can make it up is on the wage side.
Any questions?
Do we have any indication as to the wage opener for next year, what they're, what they have in their sights?
No, because again, we told them that, you know, typically, we, they know how we are. Like, we're gonna offer them what we can afford, and then the negotiation starts from there, so.
Well, it'll be wages only, so that if, you know, again, obviously, if in the end we can't agree, we can go to mediation arbitration. It'll be a wages-only thing.
But the spirit would be us offering.
Right. And it will, and it's gonna be simple. We'll see where the, what we've got available to us, whether, and it's not just gonna be for this union, it's gonna be for the other unions also. It's a much simpler production. The patrol officers will be up for a complete contract. That'll be the only one.
No, next year. They just settled last year.
I'll check.
Yeah.
Just one thing that stuck out, because I was thinking about the fireworks and the holidays in Halifax. Does that line need to be amended if you wanted to keep the same number?
Okay, I'm, I'm not...
What, like...
The short answer is yes, we understand what you're saying. The longer answer is we haven't calculated that specifically into...
Well, I'm not sure we should be paying for it anyway. I mean, that's my thing. That's my personal opinion. I love the fireworks, but again, I, I think it's a, it's a nice to have, but not necessarily something that we need to have. And so I struggle with us actually paying for it within the town's budget.
So the same for holidays in Halifax?
I, well, yeah.
Because it's the same?
But that's, you know, and that's coming out of the...
That comes out of the, that, that's not an addition. That's what's been coming out.
Right.
But it's not as mu, like, the fireworks take so much more. The, the, we don't have as many public, we don't bring the sheriff's department in for holidays in Halifax as we do for Halifax.
Right, but when you look at that line item, the amount that they told us that they were looking for, for the private, for the detail part, is very comparable to...
It shouldn't be. Charlie, didn't you say that for the fireworks, the fire department coverage is being paid for by the person buying fireworks?
Right. The toy, the house.
For the holidays in Halifax.
Right, holidays in Halifax.
Yeah, for holidays in Halifax. But we don't have as many police officers on for holidays in Halifax as we do for Halifax and lights, because up until this year, it wasn't as popular.
Halifax fireworks.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We gotta start using that terminology as Halifax fireworks. We changed the name so that there was no confusion, because a lot of people were thinking Halifax and lights were the same as...
Right.
Holidays in Halifax.
Charlie, with regard to just sort of an average amount of overtime, we position to cover that. I, I told them...
We've calculated...
Yeah, Sandy had worked, Sandy had worked numbers out for all the categories, so that we've included, if this is, the wage rates are, you know, the contract's approved, she's calculated the wage rates and the overtime rates into what would be needed for the fire department budget. It won't be a situation that suddenly we're missing $10,000 because she didn't include overtime in her calculations. She did. This was true for all the contracts.
Got a lot of numbers people around here.
Another question. I'm sure it's probably the same, but is the stipend figured over the course of the year, or is that a one-time payment?
For the paramedic?
For the paramedic?
Yeah.
It's figured straight into the base rate.
Okay. Same for the...
Yeah, I mean, in the sense of, it won't, it, in the end, it doesn't matter for that particular stipend. When you're, whether we're doing as a lump sum, or you're doing it as a per-hour basis, it won't matter, because when you're doing overtime, it has to be figured in. So I'm making the numbers up. Let's say it's 43 cents per hour for $4,000 per year. So when we're figuring out the overtime... $4,000 per year. So when we're figuring out the overtime rate for a particular individual, even if they get it as a lump sum on July 1st, if they're working overtime, that 43 cents goes into figuring the overtime rate. There's, IRS is very strict, well, IRS, actually, it's Fair Labor Standards Act, very strict about saying, in essence, everything that's taxable goes into your base rate. So if you have an education stipend, if you have longevity, if you have paramedic, whatever the stipend is, if it's taxable, it's going into the overtime rate, whether you're paying it on a per-hour basis or paying as a lump sum once a year.
It's built in.
But you're not paying time and a half on that?
Yes, you are. Yes.
So it's not a $3,000 stipend, then, if you're paying?
Well, it's, if they don't do any overtime, I know that never happens, but if someone doesn't do any overtime, that's what they get. They get $3,000 starting the course of the year, either as a one-time, one-year, sorry, annual stipend as a lump sum, or it gets built into their wage rate.
And that's standard, Charlie. Correct? That's standard.
You have to do it that way. I mean, again, if, if someone made the call to Sandy's office, they will go through the records, they will look and see how Sandy determined the overtime rates for each individual. They will look, this person get a longevity stipend, yes. Is this, is that longevity stipend built into the overtime rate? If it isn't, you've got a problem.
But those, when you work at a business, if you get a stipend for something, it's a one-time payment, it's a bonus, and you, you're paying that, you're not getting overtime on that.
Well, all I can tell you, sorry, Sandy?
Gordon, I believe that you, they would have to insert in your overtime rate, because it is the Fair Labor Standards Act, which is a law, it's a federal law, right, Charlie?
Yeah.
So we all have to follow it.
No, when I.
If you're, if you're a salary employee, then you're not getting paid overtime, so therefore it doesn't count. But if you're an hourly employee, it has to be included in the, in there, it has to be included with the base rate to figure the overtime. Not necessarily, if it's a lump sum, it doesn't get in the base rate.
So why wouldn't we pay it as a lump sum?
Because it doesn't, it has no effect one way or the other in terms of the overtime rate.
Why would we do it? I think it's just a preference thing. I don't.
Well, if somebody left too, wouldn't that have an impact?
Well, the real question was if it was paid upfront, if somebody left, are they paying that back? That's where I was going.
No. If they, if it's a lump sum, and they get on July 1st, and they leave July 2nd, because whatever date you pick.
Yeah.
They can leave.
Because that was part of our negotiations too. But Charlie's point is correct. We were trying to change it, trying to, and it is what it is.
In that case, it makes better, if you want, if you're worried about that, then it makes more sense simply doing it into the hourly rate.
Exactly. That's what I was getting at.
Or putting it as the last payment of the year.
Well, it doesn't matter. They could leave.
No, if you had it as the last, if you had it in the last.
June 30th.
Pro-rated, you're saying?
Yeah, but again, the.
What would happen is if you did it on June 30th, and say they left May 31st, then we would have to figure out what they earned towards it, and we would have to pay that portion anyways. It's like earned.
Same thing, for instance, for vacation accrual. They only bank their vacation once a year on July 1st, but they earn it constantly throughout the year. If they get halfway through the year and they leave, they get the equivalent of half-year's vacation accrual.
And just the wording seems, it's not really a stipend. It's an increase in their base pay. Like, a stipend should be a one-time payment.
Well, that's, okay, there's a couple of things happening. One is some of the, we, we're calling it a stipend because for the paramedics, they are, some of the employees are not paramedics yet, so we have to separate the stipend down. In my, in the best of all possible worlds, we were, and in fact, we're aiming to do that, and you'll see that mentioned in some of the background I've presented on some of the contracts, that we're trying to eliminate those stipends that go to everybody in some form or another, and that that gets built into the base pay rate. So it's one less thing we're gonna be arguing about in future years.
And obviously, it's like, you know, our goal is to hire paramedics. Again, with our low rate on the step one, we're not attractive to always having, so the last few hires have just been, have been EMTs, who are waiting to get their paramedic license. It's not ideal, it's not really what we want to do, but that person does not get paid that stipend or that salary until they actually become a paramedic. So it's sort of like we're paying for what we are getting.
And I could play the, I won't even say devil's advocate on this, but let's say we pay out on June 30th. Someone starts June 29th. Do they get the $1,000 stipend? Contract says they do. Only work today, but they get the $1,000 stipend. So that's another reason for building it as much as possible into the base pay, and paying it on, as a course of the year on a per-hour basis than a one lump sum.
I guess I would just get rid of it, then. Going at a stipend and have just a different set of rates.
If we could, if, if we can get to a fire department where we know we can hire people who have the paramedic certification, but we're, this is one of the problems we're running into, and you can talk to the fire chief about this, is that we have good people in our fire department who are moving up from the call. They're not paramedic certified. They're, they're working towards that, but they're not there yet. But we want them in as full-time members of the department. Problem two is, according to the chief, we're gonna be seeing fewer paramedics out there available, so the competition is gonna be greater. We may not have the luxury of hiring paramedics, people with paramedic certifications straight in. Obviously, if we're willing to pay more than 3,000 the first year, we may get a better chance. But just, you know, we're already coming in with a very large number, and the challenge, you know, the town has to make that choice. If it wants to pay even more than what we had settled the contract for in order to have people come in as paramedics, we could just simply eliminate the stipend, say, fine, we're raising, the top step right now for paramedic is gonna be $7,000 under the new contract. We'd say, anybody who walks in, it's $7,000. We're just gonna build that into the wage rate, so call it, well, $290 per hour more.
You could actually have a split rate, right? One for paramedics and one for not.
Well, in essence, yeah.
Well, that's what we're doing now, because you don't get the paramedic thing until they're actually paramedics. But Charlie, I don't have it with me, and I should have brought it. The average stipend is, wasn't it 6,000?
The top, no, the tops for which?
For paramedic, the paramedic stipend.
For us or for the communities?
For the average.
Well, this is the problem. Some of the communities don't have it anymore. They've built it in.
They haven't built it in there, right.
What we did when we looked at the wage rates was to say, we are, we're aiming for paramedics. So what we're gonna do is, for, there may be a community that doesn't have paramedic stipend, we look at their wage rate just as is. When it does have a stipend, we just build it back into their wage rate, and then compare it versus us. And I said, you know, here are wage, I'm gonna assume somebody walking in, first year is gonna have it, because I gotta have some set of assumptions to start off with. So step one, a firefighter, plus step one of paramedic, there it's our wage rate for the first year. Is it the, is it the union's preference to have this stuff granularly broken out to negotiate each individual point, or would they prefer to see? Well, they've been willing to, all the unions that we've been working with have been willing to put it into their base pay when it's been possible to do that.
But in this case, we don't think that we should until we're at the point where we're hiring paramedics.
I mean, but, and I think Tom's point, while Mel's is a good one, that we could go towards just having two wage rates, with or without. But right now, we, in essence, do have that, because there are actual steps for the paramedic. But we could, the thing is, this is where it starts saying, we're, I don't know what it, I mean, we could work with one, there's a couple ways of working it, but we haven't done that in this contract. This is what we've got.
And really, when you're sitting at the table and you have so many things, I mean, it's, it's crazy.
Bottom line is, my feeling is, I'd much rather try to give the first more money in this paycheck than to give all these other benefits along the way, because at the end, it's all about money.
Yeah.
All the little things of money too.
What I mean.
It's all the same color.
I would, I would much rather than having 15 different ways of saying, I'm giving you an increase in pay, to have one, so I'm giving you some on the bottom line, increase in pay, and that's it, instead of, I agree with you in the sense that I'd much rather not see the stipends and stuff of that nature, you know, but.
So, any other questions at 7:20? I don't know if you want to make a motion on about how we can move on.
Or when we get to, you know, you may want to continue discussing it, and we'll eventually get to it later. I'm hoping some of these articles tonight.
Right, but I sort of would like a deal of feeling from you now. You know, I don't wanna not know before we go in there how everybody's feeling about it. So I think if you can make a vote, I think it would be helpful for us to know that ahead of time.
Are you saying you don't want a shotgun waiting, you want a .45?
No, I'd like to know.
Spread out. You want us to leave the room so you can caucus? No.
Nah, I'm.
It's what we do with the union.
You want the food, you're hungry.
Making decisions on everything.
Should anybody do a staff meeting?
Yeah, that's what we should.
It was just because of the camera, else we would have totally gone in there.
I don't know. I just walked in, I want to read it over before I take a vote on something.
If you could just let us know before the start, that would be helpful.
And then if wage and personnel's recommendation of the 2% doesn't go through.
We are obligated to still go to town meeting with the proposals that have been agreed to. That is basic 101 collective bargaining. You can't unilaterally make change like that.
So I, I would expect that if that doesn't go through, that you would, I don't know.
Well, no, we have no choice in the matter.
No, no, no. I'm saying if that, if wage and personnel's doesn't go through, and until 1% goes through, I would expect to see these articles voted down as well.
They may very well be, but the board is obligated to.
Right, understand, make the motion.
But you, your decision isn't based on what you think town meeting's gonna do. Your decision would be based on.
Well, our recommendation was 1%, so that's why I'm saying that. Our recommendation was 1%, so that it doesn't say that in the warrant. It says that we do not recommend.
Right.
So that's why I worded it.
Right, but again, okay.
My only question is, with the contracts that have been negotiated, how close does it bring us to the levy in relation to?
Sandy, I think said, we, with everything, with 2%, with the contracts, I think the last number she had was about $88,000 away from the levy. We've still walked out with that much money on the table. You can confirm that with her, but I believe that's what the number was when she talked to me earlier today.
So that's about a $750,000 increase in the year spending.
I just want to remind you too, that sometimes making the investment, you, by not making the investment could cost us more, not only the quality of service, but also in replacing staff, so.
Turnover. But the counter to that is, you shouldn't be held hostage to it either.
Yes, but it's, it's, it's our role to provide the best service.
A balance, yes.
Yes. And I cannot stress to you again the importance of having a mixture of seasoned firefighters with.
So when you look across at the other towns that are, been taking the staff that we have, they're continually to go up. So every time they go up, we've gotta chase them.
Absolutely.
Up as well, so.
Unless everybody starts, just keeps doing zeros, that's how it is.
Well, you figure we invest. See, we're paying a guy, let's say, 30 grand. That's what we walk below, 30 grand a year, and all of a sudden he decides to leave and go someplace else. We've already invested 30 in him, now we gotta hire somebody else and train them, and we're gonna change the cost.
Right, but the town can't afford to pay them, you know, 55, which is what's going on with the health insurance part, and why the people, even when they start to have families, is because it's such a large jump.
And we do understand, you know, ultimately, it's gonna be town meeting's decision. They will decide whether they can afford a service level at this point, and this is how much it costs to provide this level of service. If they're saying no, that we can't afford it, they also will understand that we will get less service. We will get less experienced officers, we will get people coming in who have less experience, whether with the fire department, or as a paramedic, or whatever combination. And in a sense, that's perfectly acceptable, because it's their decision to make ultimately. But we're going in there, we're presenting this, we're explaining why we feel the increases are necessary. If they say no, there's no moral right or wrong about this. It's on economics and level source. They say no, we're gonna, we'll do our best to go right back and continue negotiating. But the board's recommendation is based on what its knowledge of the situation and what it feels is necessary to maintain the level of service we have with the current fire department.
Final question. How close does this contract get us to being competitive in the marketplace?
We're better. We're not, can mention 20% for step one. It was a situation, I think I described this at some of the executive sessions with you, that the gap at step one was much larger. It was much less at, let's say, step five. It puts us in a much better, it puts us in a better place for bringing people in, because the gap was bigger. Will people still leave? Absolutely. There's no question about it. Two reasons. We're still paying less than the average for the other communities. Two, we've got the health insurance, which we're never gonna catch up on. And that's just the communities that we're comparing ourselves against. If you talk about the northern tier in Plymouth County, even if you're talking about Pembroke or Kingston as an example, we're losing. And we're, we are never gonna make that up. So what's happening is that individuals in the department are making decisions on their own, what their priorities are. If they want to continue working here, they know that, and they're accepting the fact they're gonna get paid less, but there's, they feel there's a value in working for the Halifax Fire Department and working with the people in it.
And, and they feel that we are making the attempt to get closer, and that keeps people, just knowing that we're trying to be fair. And so will we lose people? Maybe, but we also have a chance of stay, having people stay with just telling, giving them what we, what is a fair wage.
It's reasonable.
It's not where they could be, but it's enough for some guys to say when we sit across the table, I would stay.
Well, see, I have two minds on it, having been on both sides of the table. One, when I walk in, and I say to my future employer, I've been wanting to work this kind of work my whole life, you know, and, you know, well, this is what we pay. That's okay, I'm willing to come off for that. But then all of a sudden, five days down the road, it's, well, I need more money. It's, it's difficult when you, when you're in that situation, but when you compare it to the fact that if you want to save money and retain good help, you gotta look at a reasonable amount of money reason. If you don't, then we might as well just have a revolving door, you know, because as you've seen, we've lost a lot of firefighters to other towns, and it's because of money and insurance. So if we plan on keeping anybody for any period of time, we've gotta put it there.
I know I want to see some person work on family member.
Thanks for talking.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me your ear. You can have it back now. Does the board wish to adjourn?